This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 18th, 2025. This meeting is available by go-to meetings as well for viewing at later date. We have an agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Jim made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Tom, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approve the minutes of the February 11th and 12th meetings. Everyone get a chance to read those.
Make motion for those minutes, 11th and 12th.
Mark made a motion. Is there a second?
I second you.
Jim, second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Todd.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Cindy.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Motion passes. County attorney, good morning.
Morning. So... Alright, so I'm gonna make some comments here about some of the things Mark Hendrickson said at last week's budget meeting. If I recall, Mark, I think one of the things you said was county attorney wants us to pay his help, that should come out of his. Am I wrong? Did you say that?
Correct.
Okay. Now, in my opinion, that attitude shows a complete lack of understanding of how county government operates. I don't remember you ever coming to my office, talk about the budget. I don't remember you ever asking anything about what it is that we do or how we spend our time. And I don't think you know. Just, just my opinion, but it seems like you're more interested in airing petty grievances than you are doing anything to collaborate to get things done. So let me say this. Neither I nor the firm are gonna pay for county expenses. If the county needs a new truck, you gonna buy it? The sheriff gonna pay jail expenses? Rachel gonna pay, uh, daughter utilities out of her pocket? You pay us a salary, you don't pay us an hourly rate. If you wanted to talk about that, if you wanna get into a situation like that, I'd be absolutely thrilled to have the county pay me 245 bucks an hour, my billing rate, for the time William and I spend, and there's still gonna be expenses on top of that you have to pay. I've done that math, I know what it is. Now, I do understand constraints that you're all under. That, you know, the state has, to a large extent, tied your hand, right? Am I right?
Correct. Yes.
And I also understand they did that because they want tax relief, right? State wants tax relief because the public wants tax relief, and I get it. I like the tax relief myself. But the basic function still has to go on. Now, when I put my proposed budget together, I did what I thought was the right and fair thing to do. I was trying to get the numbers up more in line with where they ought to be. Frankly, some of the numbers in that budget don't add up to what it takes to optimally run the county attorney's office, but I recognize the constraints. So, I actually had a conversation with Pam. I hope you don't mind if I bring that.
No.
Right?
Absolutely not.
Um, so Pam seems to be a pretty straight shooter, and she came to talk to me. Now, she came to talk. You didn't. She did. So, you know, she was, you know, she was saying, you know, the, uh, you know, you gotta understand there, and I don't know, I'm paraphrasing, but, you know, putting these much together is not easy. We have a reality we have to face, we have certain parameters that we have to work within, and we're trying to do what's right. I, I, I do believe that for four. So, right now, I think our budgeted number for staffing, one of those things I think Mark thinks we're supposed to pay, is $11,014. That, that is an increase, 'cause I think is it like $36,000 now, okay? I'll get to the specifics in just a minute, but, okay. Take that out, change that increase, email you this later if you wanna know. Ask for an increase, and then there's a reason for these odd numbers. Ask for an increase of $4,937. Keep computer equipment the same as it is now. Another thing, you know, is the building that we work out isn't owned by the county, or, yeah, it's not owned by the county. And for the amount of time we spend over there, the space we use, it's only fair if the county pays rent for that, and they always have. It's just fair. I don't know, Mark. If I wanna store a couple of cars out in your garage, you're gonna just say, "Yeah, that's fine, we can do it as long as you want, no charge." But knock that down to $475 increase. I'm not saying I want $475 rent. So let's make the increase from what it is now, 475. Increase in staffing of $4,937. Now, those numbers add up to $8,000 that I'm shaving off the proposed budget. I know that may not sound like a lot, but I still got a job to do, and I still got an operation to run over there, and I still got certain things I gotta do. And if someone plays with the budget too much, it's just gonna be a practicality, there's gonna be certain things that aren't gonna get done. It's not because I'm saying I don't wanna do them. I've got certain things that take resources to investigate, prosecute, have people look over. If I don't have the resources to do it, those things just gonna go away. I'm only gonna sit here and tell you what those things are, because I'm not gonna discuss my criminal investigative docket with you, Mark. But, you know, I also wanna remind you that of those budget items, we, we don't use all of every budget, right? The budget may be a certain amount, that doesn't mean we use it all, right? So like if we're budgeting $4,000 for a computer equipment, and we use $2,000 of it, the county keeps that $2,000. We're not going out on a spending spree at the end of the fiscal year and saying, "Hey, let's use up our budget." I think we're pretty conscientious about it. So just because the budget is X amount of dollars doesn't mean we spend X amount of dollars. Now, there's also something else where the county saves money. I've mentioned this before, and that's fine, I'm happy for it. My proposed budget includes health insurance for me, right? For me. Nobody else in the office, which is fine, and it's always been that way, I think. Now, 'cause I understand that county health insurance is available to pretty much all county people, all county employees. It's a little bit different in our office. We're not afforded that, okay? County does provide life insurance for one person, that would be me. I don't use it. There's a reason why I don't use it. I've discussed that before. I don't need to discuss it here. If somebody had questions, I'd answer. But for particular reasons, particular to my family, the plan we're on is the plan we feel we need to stick with. I put that number in the budget because I don't know if I'll ever need it. I, I, I'm not saying I'll never need to use that county health insurance. I, I might. I don't plan on it, but I might. You just don't know what's gonna happen, right? Something were to happen, and I don't have insurance anywhere else, I don't know what would cause that, but if something were to happen, I don't, then I may have to rely on that, okay? So I put that number in the budget, but I don't use it. So I think that's, I don't know what it is, $12,614,000, $400,000 or something like that, that in my budget, that isn't being used. That isn't carrying over, that isn't going into some slush fund that the county attorney's office is gonna use later. You know, William and I spend the majority of our time on county attorney matters. We're a part-time county attorney's office, and I guess that would mean that we're each probably allocated for 20 hours a week or so, but we spend way more than that on county and matter, county attorney matters. We have staff over there that devote 64 hours per week to county attorney matters. We have one staff member spends 40 hours a week, everything, whole time, whole time, county attorney matters. We have one that spends 60 hours a week on county attorney matters. We have one that spends eight. Now, we don't do that for the fun of it, right? If I could have Fay spend 20 hours a week on county attorney matters and devoting the rest of that to my private practice, I'd be way ahead to do that, wouldn't I? Fact of the matter is, it doesn't work that way. I can't do it. We didn't hire Fay to be full-time county attorney staff, but that's what it's worked out to be. Right? I mean, that's what it has to be. It takes that much time. It takes the six, the time and a half, basically, a person, a person, time and a half staff member to do the county attorney work. Our staff, William and I do the work, we have staff that helps assist us. If we don't have that, that stuff isn't gonna get done. And I could imagine what would happen. I'd be getting a lot of calls from judges, and they'd say, "What the hell is going on over there?", and I would explain, and then the judge would say, "Well, okay then," and things would change. You know, if I could spend less time on county stuff, or if William could spend less time on county stuff, but we still get paid, wouldn't we be, we'd be ahead to do that, would we not? You know, we'd collect our money, and we'd just do other stuff. We don't do that. We're very conscientious. We spend the time we need to spend. You know, if, if, if we didn't need computers, we didn't need office supplies, we didn't need staffing, we didn't need the other things on the list, you know, that, that'd be, that'd be great, you know, that'd be fabulous. But it doesn't work that way. The county doesn't pay for our staff. The firm pays for our staff. The county helps pay an amount to offset that, and I say "help" because it doesn't offset it. People in my office, they don't get Pipers, they don't get county health insurance like a lot of, they do in a lot of counties. So I'm gonna wrap this up, but my bet is that the workload, on average, increases 10% to 15% every year, and that's cumulative, it's geometric. In other words, this year's 15% increase is more than last year's 15% increase. Workload isn't going down, it's going up. Costs are not going down, they're going up. The time we spend on felony cases is not going up, down, it's going up. The time we're spending on China, child need assistance, juvenile cases is not going down, it's going up. The time we're spending on juvenile delinquency cases, pretty serious, that time is not going down, it's going up. Now, we do this job because we like to do it. I think someone in our office has done it since the 60s. Now, doing the combination of the county attorney work and the private practice doesn't pay as well as if we just did our private practice. I could fill that time. I wouldn't have any problem with that time. But we've always had and still do have pretty good, profitable private practice, so it was okay. You know, it was okay. We didn't need to do the full-time private practice. We, we do this work because we like it, we think it's important, but it isn't lucrative. And I don't know what's gonna happen when rural counties don't have county attorneys, because there are examples in the state where then county either has to find a county to share with, which is gonna be a difficult and probably not cheap proposition, or you gotta hire it out. Those places aren't gonna, they're not gonna cut somebody in break, 'cause it's county. You're gonna pay private rates, and you're gonna pay expenses on top of it. And I say that 'cause I'm 56 years old, right? I'm probably gonna work another six, seven years, something like that, maybe longer, depends on what, how I feel when I get there. So there's gonna be, you know, I don't know what's gonna happen, but I was over in Mason City yesterday, meeting with the Attorney General's Office area, or it's now statewide prosecutions division, and one of the themes that that lady from the Attorney General's Office was talking about, the other county attorneys, is that there aren't, rural counties are struggling. They don't, they can't get prosecutors, they can't keep, they can't get people to work in county attorney's offices. Places like Polk County can, Lynn County can. Rural counties are having a lot of trouble, and I don't think that's probably gonna get better, you know, 'cause we can't get attorneys here, right? It doesn't matter if we're prosecutor or not, you know, you can't get attorneys here. So that's gonna be something, it's gonna be, a lot of us try to work on that, figure out what to do about it, but I don't know. And just one final thing, you know, the comp board made a recommendation on our compensation. I gave them a lot of information, I met with them. They saw fit to do that. They know more about the situation than you do, Mark, 'cause you never come over and talk to me. So, anybody got anything they wanna say?
I, I just wanna interject. I appreciate you visiting with me the other day. I've tried to visit with a few of them as we're working through budgets, 'cause I'm, I'm new to this game, everybody pretty much knows that. So I have a lot of questions, and Aaron was good enough to, to sit down with me and answer some of them, and I also appreciate Mark for speaking up on some areas that he feels perhaps could be cut. We each have an opinion on things, and, and that's, that's why we're here, and Aaron, you know, heard that as well when we visited. And one of the comments I think I've made to most of them is, we're, we're gonna all have to tighten our belts, and if maybe all of us do a little bit, then one department isn't gonna get slammed against the wall for life of a better term. So that's some of the information I shared with him and shared with a few others here in the past week, so.
I'll mention the salary survey, 'cause maybe the public wants to hear this also. So I took ISAC's spreadsheet, and the salary you're at now, you're currently ranked 80, out of the percentiles of all the counties, you're ranked at 81, like 81% of the 99 counties. Then I-
81 ranked, you mean?
81 ranked.
Out of 99 counties?
Correct. So Mitchell County's population is ranked 70, as far as 70%, or 70 ranked 70. So I grouped all the counties in regards to five above, five below, and there are, I've got in front of me, there's seven that get paid more than what you do, and there's three, excuse me, yeah, seven that get paid more than you do, and three that get paid less, so you're, you're at the bottom part of that rank as far as grouping those 10, so.
And you're grouping those, believe it, state population, the five above, and the five below, yeah, that's some of the comparisons that-
That, that kinda ranks us with counties that are similar in size to what we're at.
Anybody else?
I would just love that in an email, thank you.
What's that?
The piece paper that you guys, that you read, that have that in the email with all the numbers.
Yes. Is that it?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sheriff.
Yeah, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I have January fees for you this morning in an amount of $7,844.47.
Do you have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the Mitchell County Sheriff's Office fees for $7,844.47.
Jim made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Jim, any further discussion? Roll call, Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Cindy.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Well, the only other thing I would have for you is, in terms of our canine, it's pretty much ready to go. So at some point in the near future, I will need to move the monies that were donated to the sheriff's office out of that fourth tier account that they were deposited in, into a line item so that I can pay for that dog. We raised $12,000, and the dog's 15, and there is one need to offset that $3,000. So sometime in the near future, I have to do an amendment to the budget to get that money moved. And I mentioned briefly to Rachel this morning about that, so whenever you guys feel that's, the timing's good, we'll go ahead and do that.
And when it's warmer, then you're gonna do a little demonstration, correct?
We'll bring, we'll bring Xena right here.
Oh, wow.
Whether it's cold outside or-
Oh.
So, yeah, we'll put that on the agenda, and hopefully we'll get citizens to come to and-
That's awesome. I'm excited.
Yeah. So that's really all I have, but if you have questions for me, I'll answer them, or if the public has questions, I'll take those two.
Do you do any of those kinds of demonstrations, and maybe you don't do that much, like for kids at the schools or anything like that, is there?
Yeah, we do those programs, Lions Club, pretty much anyone that asks, we will do that for. The donors that we've had, not just with this dog, but in past cases of us purchasing a canine, Jack will make time to stop by their house and say, "Here's what you spent your money on."
Wow.
And give them a little bit of sense of what, what the dog's all about.
Sense of ownership, sort of, kind of.
Yeah, yeah, so we do those. We do all those, and Jack's real good at it.
Good, yeah, yes, he is.
Yeah. Very good. Okay, everything is gonna work, you bet.
With Worth County?
Yes, yeah. Sometimes, you know, it's kinda, we'll get inmates that'll be brought in, for example, if someone was brought in last night and a judge releases them, and they have no family, no connection to the area, and it's 20:00, essentially, they're just turned out into coal. So what we're trying to do to help those folks out is we'll call Worth County and see if they'll come pick them up and get them to wherever their vehicle might be, whether it's the casino, whether it's Casey's and Manley, whatever, because I'm not gonna just turn them out in this type of weather. If they can't do that, and I've got a deputy available, we will take them, within reason, we're not gonna drive them to Minneapolis, right? But we will take them to the Casey's or Manley, or to Love's Truck Stop, someplace where they'd be in warm, and then either get access to their vehicle, or family, or a ride, you know, something. So that wasn't something that I really anticipated when we took these folks. Doesn't happen a lot, but it does happen, so just see where we're at. I'm not gonna turn them out. We have no place to really take them. You know, we tell them to go to Quick Star, but they're gonna be there for eight hours either.
Do you ever have to take advantage of the North Iowa juvenile detention, that they do some, some transportation services down from there? Of course, it's-
Well, we will, yeah, we would, in juvenile matters, but we wouldn't use them to-
For-
For these attractive agents, yeah, they wouldn't do that for us.
Okay, good.
So sometimes we'll put them up in a hotel, worst-case scenario, but anyway. So, one thing I really didn't consider when we took their inmates, but it's still, we're still doing okay with it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Department head discussion.
Yeah.
Morning.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Alright, Conservation Board had their monthly meeting last Tuesday. Elaine Govern was there along with Jim Green to talk about what was going on with the bike trail. One of the bigger things they were talking about was last weekend's events. Unfortunately, because of the weather, those got postponed. We reviewed RFPs for engineering slash master planning on three of our campgrounds. After scoring those out, the board selected Bolton Mink as the entity engineering firm that we'll be working with to do master planning on Interstate Park, Helverson, and then Old Toronto Park. We reviewed fees for the calendar year 2025. The prices will stay the same as last year. We'll have 14 spots that we'll reserve out for seasonal sites at Riverside, and then we left the fees the same, and the other thing we had on the agenda was the land acquisition discussion. Nothing formal was done, as the family members are still discussing the acquisition at this time, so. Any questions?
Just wanted to interject. We had a chance to have a visit on, on Friday and, and got to get a little more background on the Conservation Board and, and some of the things that they have coming up, and so I appreciate-
It would be, thanks for taking me with me, so.
We went through a whole lot, so.
Alright, anything else?
Any idea when the Bolton Mink will have their stuff ready?
Uh, so we won't approve a contract till our next board meeting, so then they'll start after that with our master planning stuff. So the timeframe that we have is that we want it by July, so that's the timeframe to work on. But once we meet, see the agreement, official agreement, we'll take a look at it while the county attorney will review it, and then we'll accept the contract in March, and then we'll be in the process from there, which is meeting with the staff, meeting with the board, probably doing a public meeting, to build the master plan from there, so sometime in July would be the time for it.
Thank you.
You bet.
How many more days have you got for the two trucks that are up on?
Thursday.
Fit, so this Thursday will-
Thursday in the evening, they said the best time to close those is like 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock. I can't remember what times they are, but they asked, they said we'd want people to be off work.
Then they're out the door.
Then they're out the door, yep.
The anxious to, to see how that turns out.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Just a quick update. Last week, I worked over in the sheriff's office updating all of the deputies' textbooks over to Windows 11. That worked great, no problems over there. I am going to prepare a report of the computer situation when it comes to upgrading. I wasn't done until late Friday night, so I didn't have a chance to put that together, but I'll share that. It's not overly interesting. Also, I have signed a statement of work for moving us. I talked about moving to the government cloud. I have signed a statement of work with that. The first meeting is on Thursday, 2:20, to start that process with a company called Liftoff, who specializes in doing that government transfer. I've also received a quote for the body cam storage we talked about in the amount of, we're very close to $2,500, which includes labor, to get that all implemented. That's just a matter of signing that quote to start the process up there. Those are the main things that I worked on last week. We also mentioned phones, which I'll talk about on the agenda item that we have for phones, but that's been the basic movement on the projects that we talked about. Are there any questions? Great. Alright, if you guys have any questions, let me know. I just wanted to give you a quick overview of what's going on, yep.
Thank you, Brett.
Any other department? Any other department heads? We will move on to discussion with Northeast Iowa Food Bank, because the county engineer is not here today.
Good morning. Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks for having me, uh, my name is Joshua Stevens, I'm with the Northeast Side Food Bank, I'm the donor relations manager. And, um, I reached out, uh, to, uh, Mr. Brain, and he invited me to the meeting, so thank you for having me. Came up from Waterloo, nice little drive. I wasn't sure if it was gonna be on, so I'm glad everyone was here when I showed up, because of the weather, so. So the reason I'm here is, uh, I'm here about food insecurity. Obviously, I work for, uh, the Northeast Side Food Bank, and we have a sixteen county area, and Mitchell County is one of our, one of our areas that we cover, we do mobile food pantries, we do, uh, we work with agencies like churches and, uh, and schools, different pantries. So I'm basically reaching out, I wasn't sure how to go about it, uh, but I just brought some numbers with me, and I'll leave, uh, some information for you too after I leave. Just about Mitchell County, and just the numbers had changed from last year to this year. There's just been a huge increase in food insecurity, and the numbers are just staggering, so that was one reason I want to present, since you're one of our counties. So, like, uh, right now, um, in our service area, eight, we, last year, we did eight point four million meals, and there are just under forty-one thousand, uh, food insecure peo- people. In Mitchell County, just to reflect that, it's about nine percent is the food insecurity rate, uh, and like, one in four of the food insecure children, so that's one of the reasons why we, um, have a new initiative to do school markets, which is basically a different way to say, um, school pantries. We have been changing our language, so it kind of brings it to a level where it's not like an embarrassment. So we say markets instead of pantries, that way the students can use the pantries, they can use different resources, mobile food pantries. So with these new numbers, um, our, uh, food bank has actually decided to, uh, grow. Uh, we just can't house the food that we need, and our truck fleet is, um, also, um, aging, so my director and I made the decision that we would start to introduce ourselves to the counties that we service, it just hadn't been getting done as much. We have our agency teams well, but I decided just to get on the agenda here and just reach out and just say, here's what we're doing, this does affect you guys. If you believe in food insecurity or not, like, it's a big deal, like, I'll be honest, I was blessed growing up. Never crossed my mind, I took this position, and it really opened my eyes to how many people really do depend on the food bank and the different resources here, even in Osage, I mean, it's, people, people really do need it, so, uh, so, like I said, I have some information, and that's another thing I came on here too, is I wanted to be, I wanted, when I took this position in, uh, in April, I wanted things to be more transparent, instead of us just receiving money that's just kind of, you know, out into, you know, it just gets lost, I wanted I wanted to reach out and let everyone know kind of where exactly the money is going, you know, that we receive from grants, thanks for this county. So one of the things I am, um, requesting, and I'm actually gonna meet with all sixteen of our counties, uh, I met with, uh, Howard County last week, and I met I'm gonna meet with you guys here today, is we're just trying to, it's really important to just update our truck fleet, so I'm asking for financial assistance, and I can leave that information with you. I wasn't exactly sure how to go about it, this is, this is actually, I'm kind of new to this, uh, I wasn't actually sure it was gonna be an audience place, it's kind of nice. I thought I was just gonna be kind of like a one-on-one with you, actually. I'm walking in, I'm like, okay, I can do this.
Surprise.
So, um, basically, that's what I'm here for, uh, short and sweet, I know you guys have a lot to do, but basically, um, I just want the board here to know that if you have any questions about what we do in this county, we do a lot, or, um, where our food bank is headed and what we expect it to look like, I would be your contact at the food bank, just give me a call, or I can make in touch with the right person. Like I said, I can leave some information, but basically, it's a pretty simple mission.
So you, I, I appreciate the information.
Sure.
So if you're gonna request funding from us, where, where do you get your other fundings from, what are your other funding sources?
Okay, so, uh, for this particular county, I would, uh, I would attend local meetings, and we get local, uh, I guess we have state grants, there's a lot of different ways that I do it as well. I can provide the numbers of what we get for this particular county. But yeah, that's, that's part of my job, is just to kind of reach out and get any local or any grants that are available, I apply for them, and the food bank, um, we do, we do receive a lot, we're kind of like, a lot of people think, well, there's just tons pouring in, it's a huge operation. So like, we're still, because of these numbers, the way that they were so jarring, like I said, so staggering, we still do need help, so I can provide those, I can email those out to, to you, and then you can pass them on if that works for you, since I can, you know, just I can definitely do that, let you know what we've received this last fiscal year. But yeah, the numbers are just, it's just incredible what they've done, and I'm not sure when it's gonna stop until we, until something changes, like every year, just since I've looked back, it's just incredible. Like, the, I mean, we went from, I think, six point one to eight point four million meals in like one year, it's just for our service area, a lot, so. So, any other questions about, uh, what I do or how I can provide information or?
A couple, yeah.
Yeah.
So I contacted the Mitchell County, uh, Director of Mitchell County Food Bank also to see where the overlap was between what we do in Mitchell County and what you're doing.
Sure.
And, uh, replied, information in regards to how they, uh, they purchase a lot of food from you, because it's a lot cheaper for them to do it that way.
Right.
And naturally, the concern I had was to, and I'm not opposed to funding you, I'm not going down that road.
Sure.
But I didn't want to be funding outside county individuals and not even funding our own local food bank, so that's why I wanted to know where that overlap was between the two entities, so.
Well, they would be, they would be acting under our, um, I want C three status, so they are a partner of ours. So anything that they receive also comes through us first before we distribute it back out. So this would directly affect that food pantry as well, yeah. So, um, yeah, that's the partnerships that we have, we, we keep them, all of my numbers and everything go through Feed in America, so we're all one big group. So, yeah, it would be one of the same.
Yeah, if you could provide some information and, uh, funding sources that you get, that.
I will.
Help me quite a bit, I appreciate that.
I sure, yeah, I sure will, there's just, like I said, there's just a more expected need than we, we anticipated, and that's why we've decided to, uh, expand our footprint, and then also our truck fleet come along with it, so, um, I do appreciate it, I'll get you whatever you need.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Can, can I also interject or ask, so when is your, um, projected date that you're gonna need? Is it one truck, two trucks, if you could put that in your information so that, you know, we kind of have an idea?
Yeah, absolutely, we're, uh, we're sorting out all the details, I've been put in charge of, uh, fundraising for the new building, this wouldn't be, I'll leave information on that as well. But, um, this is gonna be separate from our capacity campaign, this is more, um, county specific, this would be, so we can get trucks out here to Mitchell County more often.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're coming out maybe like once a week, I'd like it to be more like two or three times, and in order to do that, we just need a fleet that's more reliable, I mean, this is top of the state, you know, and we really need to get out here more, and that's, I really want to come out and meet everybody and just find out, I'll, I'll, I'll drop by the pantry today before I head out of town and just do a tour.
Good.
Well, I just wanted to say, I work a lot with Riceville Food Pantry.
Sure.
And they talk about how much they get from Waterloo, Diane Setka, and I know at Crop Walk, the money I, that's raised, twenty-five percent of it goes where, whatever church raises it, and I raised, I don't know, thirty-six hundred or whatever, Riceville got nine hundred and twenty-five dollars from what I raise from Crop Walk, and Diane sent me a thing, and everything they were able to. And I know she drives on Waterloo to pick it up herself, so.
Yeah.
And there's food banks, I know, and there's a lot of them, not just in Osage, but she gave me something, that's huge, you know, so thank you.
It's great that, and people understand how far it goes, so basically, uh, when we say purchase food, they basically purchase at cost, so there's a fee. We get like bulk items, like in big totes, we have volunteers come in and put it in smaller bags, and then we sell at cost. So we're not making a profit, you know, it's just, uh, we're kind of breaking even, which is referring to, so I think we sell for right now, it's like eighteen cents a pound or something like that, it's depending on where we're located, just fuel costs and stuff like that, so that would also go into that, um, that figure for, uh, for purchasing a new truck.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate you coming and talking to us, and.
Yeah, appreciate it.
I do want, uh, when you contacted me, if you go on to the Northeast Iowa, um, Food Bank website, there's a lot of information and a lot of numbers, but I would still like you to forward us what you have.
I will give you everything I have on Mitchell County, uh, what I'll leave behind kind of shows a comparison for the whole Northeast Iowa, and also Mitchell County specific, that's some information on here, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I leave this with you?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for driving up.
Oh, no, it was a nice, beautiful drive. There goes, this town, yep, thank you.
All right. Approve Recorder's Report for January.
Moved approved the recorder's report for six thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-three cents, month ending January third, first, twenty-five.
Jim made a motion, is there a second?
I second it.
Pam? Any further discussion? Roll call, Tom?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve Treasurer's Report for January. I'm sure she comes down. I don't think she's coming down today. I don't either. Sir motion to, to approve Treasurer's Report?
I made a motion.
Mark made a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Jim?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom? Motion passes. Discussion and possible action on upgrading phone system.
So Laura, Rachel, Rachel and I have met with a couple different vendors coming to the phone system. We've, uh, landed on and agreed with, um, a phone, sis- uh, phone system through three CX, which is provided by a company called Iowa IT. It fits the needs of both the courthouse, and then more importantly, the needs of Laura when it comes to her nurses, being probably the most sensitive thing that it helps with. The total cost of the project I received a quote for is thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, that includes labor and all of the equipment. We may need to modify how many phones we have, I overestimated everything, I always do, to possibly be a little more than what we need. I talked to a timeframe about the, uh, from the gentleman from Iowa IT, he said that, uh, quickly would be a month, I don't want to have to necessarily do this quickly, I want to do it right. So I'd probably estimate after ordering equipment, we're gonna need to redo all of the phone trees, like when you call in, do you want to talk to, or need to record all of the voice messages again, so there's a lot of that smaller stuff that's had to have to be done throughout, and then implementation of the public health portion to make sure it meets Laura's needs, so I'd like to, uh, have two months for the completion of that process to make sure it's done right, could be done faster, but, um, there's a lot more to it than just swapping out the phones and looking up the new ones. So that's what we came to an agreement with on what we think would be best for the phone system.
So do you do all that, or do they come in and do all?
It'll be, it'll be working together on, uh, setting that all up.
So when we have issues, will it be completely you, or will we have to call?
No, that also, that also includes licensing for the three CX, which part of that licensing is support.
And how much do they charge each time we have an issue?
That is covered under the licensing, licensing is, uh, thirteen hundred and fif- one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars a year. And that'll be a continuing charge year over year, which is just the way it is to keep the system supported.
Thirteen fifty, is that what you said?
Thirteen fifty a year, correct. This phone, this particular, I don't want to get too much in the weeds on it here, but this particular phone system, the licensing is by concurrent calls, which means how many people can call at one time out of the, uh, out of the county, whoever happens to be using the phones, this is, uh, this particular number we started with was twenty-six concurrent calls. I think it would take something extreme for there to be twenty-six calls at the same time from the county offices, but if we do see we come up against that, that can always increase, which then would be a slight increase in licensing. But I can't imagine twenty-six simultaneous calls.
So this will be an app that we can use?
Correct, yep, there, there's two different portions of it, there'll be the desk phone, of course, and nothing will change from that, it's just a slightly different model. But yeah, there's also the three CX app on your cell phone, which allow you to make calls, uh, through the phone system, the nice thing about that, and something that Laura really needed, is for their nurses to be able to call clients without having their personal cell phone numbers front facing. So instead of showing, you know, Ryan's phone number when they call, it'll show the county phone number.
Right.
Which obviously is a really big improvement for them, and one of the big reasons we were looking at that mobile, uh, solution for them, and that will be available to everyone as well, on their phones, whomever would want to use it, and all those calls would originate from the county then, for whoever's getting called.
Did you send any information to the board about, about these people or anything, or did I miss it, or, no, okay? Or is there information you can send us?
Yeah, absolutely, yep, um, the quote was received yesterday.
Okay.
So, um, I was working with him a little bit yesterday to get that done, so let me, after this, I'll send you all the information I have, so you guys can see the actual, actual numbers.
The first, and I'm, I'm not opposed to this, I just ask questions, so the first company that came here and visited with us, they were cheaper in regards, uh, quite substantially cheaper as far as their initial cost, and then also with their month, with the monthly fee, I guess is what that is. So, briefly, why, why is this company justifiably, even if it's more expensive, why would we go with this company, what's the benefits of this company over the first?
Sure, so the previous company, one thing it didn't include in their quote was labor when it comes to implementing the system, so that would also be an additional charge with them for whatever they need to help with setting up the phones, so that would probably be a few thousand dollars at least, bringing them a little closer. The IT reason why this system is better is because we get to keep our phone numbers with OMU instead of having to take them to another company, where then they are in control of our phone numbers. I've done phone, oh gosh, how many have I done, three or four for organizations, and always keeping your phone numbers important, because porting them to other entities can be very difficult, particularly private entities, because they don't have, uh, they don't have, um, they don't need to do it, so it's always a very slow process, so it's nice to have it in a, um, a local, a local entity, so we can control that better. That also moves it, I think, the concerns about possibly being entirely cloud-based aren't totally without merit, that is certainly a concern, and this one offers both the cloud service as well as the on-premise service, depending on which way we end up wanting to go with it. So the cost, it, it's stark when you look at it, but I don't think at the end of it, it's gonna be that much different, and I feel from an IT standpoint, and being able to manage it and keep it running, it's, it's much better. I don't know if that answers your question, so.
And is there any other nearby counties or that you've worked with?
Yes, definitely, yeah, I, I, I talked to, I talked to quite a few, three CX was one of, one of the big ones, I've also worked with three CX in the past, my previous job was a vendor of it as well, so I have comfort there. But yeah, there's quite a few counties, and particularly this vendor, uh, that they used to, so that's been a good relationship to make with the Iowa IT.
And yeah, Joel had mentioned the cloud-based situation.
Yeah, it's.
Security.
Correct, and it's not, I, I like the option to be able to choose one or the other, because these phone systems, you're gonna want to get quite a few years out of them, and that'll give us some flexibility, and in the future, we do want to address it one way or the other. But yeah, let me provide that quoting information, for sure.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, is that something you guys want to be involved in the signing of the statement of work for, I've usually just been signing it for all my projects, do you want to be involved in that process? I don't see, uh, whatever you guys want to do.
I don't have a problem you, uh, sign in it, just as long as the board knows what's going on, so that's why I like information.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I got it in my email, so it'll just be a matter of forwarding it on.
Yeah, so that we can at least document kind of where we work.
Oh, and then, um, as far, yeah, so we talked about implementation time as well, that's one thing I needed to remember to talk about.
Okay. When you get it switched over, will they all, when it goes everybody's phone, go to the new, or are you gonna go department, like?
It's gonna have to go all at the same time because of the way the numbers work. So the courthouse has one particular number that's like on Google and what's considered the main phone number, that's going to have a cascading effect on every employee within the county, so it'll have to be done on a cutover, which is generally done on a weekend. So there's no disruption to business, and then the next time everybody comes in, it'll be the new phone on their desk.
So how do you feel about, it seems like most of the calls come into the auditor's office, correct? Through this system we have now?
Yes, people are not aware of, every office actually has their own phone number.
Yeah.
It's not ours, but so we'll just, we'd have to figure out a way to make that more.
The number on Google, when you Google Mitchell County. The number on Google, when you Google Mitchell County and it shows the number is the auditor number. So obviously that's what everybody's going to call because they're Googling the number. But that could change. That'll be part of the process of the new system is trying to go through that. And we, I discussed that with Rachel. We can totally overhaul that and.
Maybe update the website so that it's.
They're listed there.
They're listed there, but.
It's just a Google thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's what people are, are going to see. They're not going to go to our website and find our phone number. They're going to Google.
Right. Right. Thank you.
But we can fix that.
I'm not sure if Laura's on, but the one thing that sold me and I don't even use it is currently she with the system, she has to wait till the office hours or like it's closed on Friday to go in to switch who the on-call nurses for the next week. And she can't do that during business hours where like now she'll be able to do it through the website and she won't have to be physically at work to do it. And I think that's a huge benefit.
Yeah, but that, that helps.
Well, emergencies, she had mentioned too, that, you know, something comes up and she's got to make a switch.
But I talked to, I talked to her and she's comfortable with that solution to meet her needs. So that was paramount, almost more important than Rachel, right? That's not very often.
And it was, you know, she had echoed too that, like we said, that it's imperative that we get this and get moving. And Ryan was good enough to mention that, you know, it costs may increase if we don't start to step into this rather.
Anything else?
So for the document, then we'll add on the agenda for next week. Or is?
Yeah, whatever you guys want to do. Sorry I didn't get it earlier, but it was, we met on Thursday and then we had yesterday off, so.
I just like looked at it before I.
Oh, sure. I, I certainly understand that. So I'll get, I'll send that all off to you guys for the information.
Thank you.
Good. Yes, you're very welcome.
Number 11, discussion and possible action on consideration to assist funding of historical society building project.
I put this on the agenda. The historical society came to us with requests of $770,000 for, for a building that they are building to assist in it. That's not the total cost. And I just, I think we moved it on it, invited them here to discuss it if we have any questions with them in regards to what they're doing for funding, where they're at with loans. General discussion with the board and if the board wants to do this for them.
Did you say seven?
$770,000. I believe that was the request, wasn't it? Yeah.
Are you all familiar with the background of why we're building? I, I don't know. I mean, we, we were in a, I, I put some notes down.
Glad to hear that, yes.
Yeah, we were, we were arguing against moving out of the CRC for quite a while. We had found out kind of indirectly that that was in plans. After several months of doing that, we realized it's probably in our best interest to move out. Because then we're, we're on our own and we have our own building and facility that we could work with. So we had a search for building sites and we went over the whole county. And unfortunately, there was nothing in the county that had a building, an existing building that would work, that was big enough for us. Osage had offered us something, but it wasn't even close to what we were requiring and up to standards. So we decided on building at Cedar Valley Memories site, which where we already are. And we would attach it to the existing Smolik building. With that, we had to use Morton Builders as our builder because it would, if we use anyone else, it would void our warranty on the existing Smolik building. So we went with Morton and Morton was able to provide complete construction coverage. So including surveys, site analysis, the blueprints for it, meeting all codes that we were required to meet, which we had no idea there was so much. And, and they were able to secure the subcontractors for us. We tried and we emphasized that we wanted to use as many local people as we could or near here to us. And they were able to do that. So we looked at the plans and when we were proposing, they proposed a $2.2 million building. I thought, this is nuts. This, something is wrong here. So we looked at the construction costs and what, what that was broken down into and realized there was nowhere to cut things that we had. We have cut a few things, like we're not finishing our storage room and it's going to be a plywood floor and, you know, just paint. So there were some things like that that we could do, but we were required to put in more bathrooms. We were able to not have to put in a sprinkler system, which saved us a lot of money. But, but we had to do other things that met code. So the $2.2 million was what we had to come up with. So that, that was, so then our job was then number one, raise the money and decide what we put in this museum to make it our Mitchell County Museum. So we stuck with pretty much the size that we had for our space in the CRC, which seemed to work out pretty well. It'll be a little bit better use of the space because it'll all be on one floor. So it's a handicap accessible to everyone. We do have a second floor storage area above our cataloging room and bathrooms. But that will be not accessed by the public and it'll just be for storage for putting things that we don't have on display right now. So we're, we're exploring a lot of different ways to make this a true county museum that's appealing especially to children. Because adults our age here appreciate history a little bit more than children do. And I don't think we can really stimulate a history interest in children, but at least give them exposure to it. And that's our, our task. So we had a few things like that with the night at the museum, which wouldn't have to be night because there's no windows in the place. We could just turn the lights off. A scavenger hunt where the kids have to find things around the museum and, and then comment or something about that. Volunteers for reenactment, doing things like, you know, using a cookstall to make cookies or something like that for, for kids. So they get an idea of that, the way it was. So the, one of the main things we, it was brought up again yesterday, we had a meeting, was preserving historical information by passing down stories in a verbal way. And we would like to create an area with a couple of easy chairs, microphones and cameras where you could bring your grandmother or your grandchildren in and they could ask questions. You could answer and record those stories and we would have a way of storing those. Because digital storage is cheap. So we can do that now. So that's another way to, for future generations and for, if we can catalog that appropriately, you can search it out, which we also have online now as a searchable database. So what we felt is that Mitchell County needs a reservoir of our history. We all have a story. We all want to not be forgotten. And then together we've come up with the bigger picture of our story. And that's, that's what we're here to ask you to help us with, is to make this storage of our stories possible. And that, that request, one of the ways moving into fundraising is that we're going to be sending out a fundraising letter coming up very soon. I just, while we're sitting back here, I got the quote on what it's going to cost, which is about, if we sent to everybody in the county or every household, it'd be about $5,000 to send out a direct mail. But I, what I have here is a letter of each of you. And I told Rachel this morning, if you get one of these, you have to use your personal money. So that's a sample. It's a letter explaining our situation. It's a pamphlet that, that shows the possible levels of giving. There's some pictures in there of some of our exhibits. One of them showing you children looking at our newspaper exhibit and they had a field trip that came out and they had a job to look up the story and follow it through when they got back to this, their classroom as well and write it up. And I never did get a final report of that. Somebody might have, but I didn't get that report. So that's the type of thing that we are, that we're doing. And the, the type of fundraising that we're going to do for now, in addition. Our fundraising so far, you have the statistics on that, Krista does, and you can probably say.
Okay. Well, so far we have received $240,000 in donations, which we feel pretty good about because we haven't sent out our plea yet to people. So, you know, we're, we're pleased with that. Let's see. Currently, we have actually paid Morton 1.2 million. And we will still owe, of course, $960,000. We have a $1.6 million line of credit with the bank, which we agreed to do the 1.6 million because we were able to stand $600,000 of this project ourselves. We had the funds available to spend $600,000. So of the 1.6 million line of credit, we have currently borrowed $410,000.
So without doing all the math here real quick, the 770s, you're still going to be short when you give up.
We're going to do a lot of fundraising as.
All right. We're short about half a million.
The other thing is that this 2.2 million is the building, just the building. We have other expenses coming in, like if we want to put a sign on the south side of the building, that's $5,200. If we want to do, some of the outside grading is done, but there's lawn work because it's all torn up and we're going to have to do that. There are a couple of things that inside it seemed hoped, that we're not doing nothing with the existing office, which is 30 years old, which will become our research library. And we would really like to carpet it with some simple carpet or follow the carpet that's in the museum into that. We've written a grant for paint. Hopefully we can paint and carpet. The carpet, we were quoted $10,000. I got, I talked to Brendan Wagner and he said, I think that's a little high. He said, I think we can get that down a little bit. But still, those are added on expenses that we have not got figured into this budget.
And the advertising, the big boost and boon in advertising to relate to Cedar Valley Memories in the early fall or late, late summer there. We haven't got anything in that, in the budget for that yet either, because that will be, that will be, I am sure, very important for, for the kickoff.
We planned to have the museum open. We were talking yesterday, I don't think we can have the grand opening, but have it open during our power show. The power show, we pretty much have covered our, through sponsorships in the past. So the existing programs are still being paid for with our plans that we, that we had. And that would, along with that, we would be telling people about the museum being open and come and see that too. So hopefully we'd have a bigger crowd even this year than we had by last year, which was a good crowd, so.
And we're thinking about having a grand opening possibly the end of September.
When is the power show?
It's the second weekend in August.
I think it's the ninth of August. Yeah.
Then there's, is there the rendezvous out there too?
Yeah, that's the weekend of autumn artistry and that's the third weekend in September.
So then you would try and do it after that.
Or maybe into October, but we're aiming for September if we could.
What are you thinking about hours for operation being open through those?
I'm sure we would be open as much as we are now or were, which was Wednesday through Saturday from 1 to 5. Some of that's going to be determined later. I mean, we're sure we'd be open that much. But depending on what we get for interest, as far as like I said before, we kind of want to see if we can't become a destination for bus trips and things like that. And we'll just have to see what the, what the public would like for open hours.
We're looking at Iowa tourism, yeah. And that, that's a big.
Day update.
Yeah. So putting us on the map that way. Mitchell County on the map, we do. I'm looking forward to the opportunities education wise, if we can go back to kids that because of our location, help at Cedar Valley Memories, that we can partner with Mitchell County Conservation
Absolutely.
for field trips and whatnot.
On some events.
To visit both sites and it's more of a day thing for school kids.
I'm, I'm particularly excited to hear of your, your possible opportunity for some sharing from the elderly, let's put it. Because one of the really great things that I heard is some individuals that were interested in, how can we share the stories of our depression experiences, our World War II experiences? And those people are getting fewer and farther between. And so if we don't tap into some of that, you know, personal sharing and knowledge, I, I fear that we're going to lose it forever. And so I'm excited to, to see how, how you incorporate that, because I think that's so important.
We, we did have an opportunity, I did, but we were at the fairgrounds a couple of years ago, three years ago maybe it was. And Mark, Mr. Weber came through, I can't remember his first name right now, but anyway, he came through the schoolhouse and he's, he had attended that schoolhouse.
Yeah.
And as he's talking, I thought, this is good. So I got my phone out and I started recording and then I said, you know, you're being recorded. He goes, oh yeah, that's fine. That's all right. So he went on for these stories. So I condensed that down into about a 10 minute video. It's on our website for the schoolhouse if you want to go see it. But that's the type of thing that we could come up with, like you're saying, to.
Yeah.
To heat us up.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And the family was so grateful to have that.
Yeah.
He's, he's, he's gone now.
Yeah. Well, that's, you know, and a lot of those old schoolhouses that he had sprinkled across the county are, are gone now.
Yeah.
And, and so those stories are, are few and far between, so.
One more thing we're doing is writing grants. We have hired a grant writer. Elizabeth Barrett here is our new grant writer. She is responsible for grants in Riceville, which the funny story was that they had to raise some funds and then they could get matching funds, is what it was. But she was told on Monday that this, they got their funds, but the grant was due Friday. And she got the grant done and it was a $1.5 million grant. So I said, I want the same thing.
Likes that, those expectations.
So let's just, let's just, $770,000 is the money that's on the table. So that's what kind of we're thinking about here. So you have a loan that comes due, did you say August?
Yes, it's a construction loan and I believe it's the first of August.
Okay. So whatever we would decide to award, if anything, could it be used, I'll just say in reserve until that bank loan comes due and then be used for matching funds for something that she finds? Because, I mean, if you just, if you just spend it and then you come, come across a million dollar grant and then you don't have the, or whatever, pick a number, yeah, then you don't have any matching funds for it or then the grant is no good. I mean, it's just a thought.
That's why I asked Elizabeth here today. So she's hearing this firsthand about matching. I think I'd mentioned it to you before, but still, I think that's a really.
I'd sent Krista a, a link to a grant and I don't even remember if it was from the Iowa Economic Development.
Yeah.
There's different ones.
We ended up with it, yeah.
Okay. So there's things like that that come across from the state, but there are always a very fast timeline that, oh, it's due tomorrow, that kind of thing. Or you need matching funds and a lot of people don't qualify simply because of those two things, so.
Yeah. So I have, I've put together a list of some grants that we're going to be working on. And the majority of these actually do not require a match. There is one that just opened up in the last couple of days from the Iowa Historical Resource Development Program. That's up to $50,000 with a required 25% match. That's due in May, but the funds can't be used for any project. That's due in May, but the funds can't be used for any project that starts before July 1st of this year. So it would have to be used for things like you were, you know, building an exhibit or something like that. It can't be used for the construction that we've already done. And that's the case with pretty much every grant is that we can't, funds can't be used retroactively. So like you mentioned, a loan that was up there, the AARP Community Challenge Grant for creating vibrant, vibrant public places and open spaces that averages about $10,000 that we were applying for for hopefully some landscaping. And that does not require a match. But again, we can't start the work until the grant is awarded, so. Just get on text or whatever.
That's a big thing, you, you are looking for grants outside of funding.
And there will be opportunities that are not connected with the main construction to use grant money for, you know. For example, Dennis talked about, you know, upgrading the present office into our library. That itself could be its own project that grant money could go to, things like that.
Make sure and stay in touch with Jenny at Economic Development, she, she is, she would help a lot.
She's been helpful too, yeah, she calls once in a while with some ideas.
Good job, Tim. Let's connect the line, Jenny, so let me get your information at this meeting so I don't have things. Is that okay, Dennis, if I give a little?
Yeah, please.
So the board interested in assisting them for $770,000? That's roughly about third of what the 2.2 that they're looking at. The board interested in helping them out?
And so what, where is your assessment that the $770,000 would come from? Would that be TIP fund?
It would have to be, TIP money. We'd have to do an urban renewal amendment like we did last year. Personally, I'd like to do it as an internal loan, so we're not going to a bank, I think. So we'd have to have Northern Securities look at our finances and we'd have to have Bond Council look at the whole thing to make sure that it would work. I keep track of our local option sales tax pretty closely and I won't spit out a number, but I think between what we have in there and the way we did it last year, I'm thinking that we have enough money to do this in an internal loan. So an internal loan is where we borrow from ourselves, TIP money pays it back. TIP money also pays it back with interest because we are our own funding source. So we end up with more than what we started with. That's, we have to get a hold of Bond Council and Northern Securities.
So I personally don't feel like I, I have enough to make a confident decision on this today. I don't know if that's what you were, you were hoping. I, I appreciate the additional information and I too received some, some phone calls and some additional information because that was my first comment was, holy crap, that's a lot for a Morton shit.
For Morton.
As, as I'm sure many people in the county are.
Yeah.
I understand also that, you know, your cement requirements are different when you're talking about putting heavy things onto a cement floor structure. And I, I think the interesting thing is the number of bathrooms you're required to have because it's a commercial building. So some of those things that we as the public don't necessarily think of when we think, oh, you're just going to build a building and put the historical society in there.
And there were some things that we decided to be proactive on, like we decided right away on floor heat.
Right.
And we all know that heating costs are only going to continue to go up. Got that there, it's efficient. And that a big amount of insulation that Morton does. I mean, it would be a very insulated building, so we're trying to hold, you're paying for all that upfront, basically.
Right.
If anyone would like to view what's there already, I, I'm open to. If after the meeting you want to do it this afternoon, that's whatever, you let us know. I'd be glad to show you through because it's, it's amazing when you walk into it. It's really quite a.
Our regular meeting is Thursday night.
Yeah.
If anybody wanted to come, we.
I think we have another meeting coming up this Thursday. We're just individually, if somebody wants to come out.
Say again.
That grounds is already in that urban.
Yeah, the whole, the whole thing is in, the parcel is in the urban area, yeah.
It's finally amended.
And I guess the way I worded the agenda was not to actually award $770,000 today, but it was that there are, as you said, there are things that we need to find out. And part of that is Bond Council, part of that is Northern Securities. Now, I, anybody can call them if they want, I am going to call them. But I also don't want to be doing this work if a majority of the board just says, no, we're not going to do that. I'm not going to waste my time on it. If the majority of the board wants to consider doing this, I'll, I'll keep working on it and get ahold of some people so we can learn that process also, so we see if it actually qualifies.
Oh, I think whatever the amount or whatever we decide to do, we still, it still behooves us to get the information that we need to back up any kind of decision. So I for one appreciate the legwork. If you can share that with all of us, Jim, that'd be awesome.
I would, yes, and that's what I'd like to know.
So we're not all chasing the same dog there, so to speak. And, and that, that helps a lot, particularly me, you know, from that standpoint, and then.
Anybody else, anybody else want to work on this or what? I mean, I, I want to do it, so there's two of us, I guess, what's, everybody else think?
I'm.
Got to look at the information, you know it.
Absolutely. Mark?
You got the majority.
Okay.
And let, and let me clarify, like Jim said, this in no way is throwing the statement out to the public that we're supporting $770,000 to the Historical Society. So we understand, yeah, that's what you're coming to us asking for, so.
Consider.
It only, it only makes sense that we review.
Review, get the information and go from there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, buddy. Yeah. Well, just as a member of the public, and I am a life member of the Historical Society, and I also was on the board for many, many, many years. And I think this is a true investment in Mitchell County, both past, present, and future. And, you know, we have several history books, one that was written in 1853 and the last one in 1972. And we really need to keep current and keep moving on. They have over 10,000 artifacts in there now, they're beautiful. They change exhibits every three months. And, you know, I just, I really encourage the board to support this because I think, and I've talked to the auditor and I know there's a substantial amount of tax financing money. I don't think it's important for it to just sit there when there is a project that could be a real investment in the county. So I would urge each and every one of you, and I've talked to each and one of you, and, and I thank you for listening to me and asking questions. I hope you support the $770,000.
Thank you, babe.
I think they've done an amazing job in all that they're raising themselves. And, you know, they had one donation anonymous of 150,000 already. They've had one of 25,000, a 10,000, a 5,000, and they haven't sent out letters. And, you know, a number of us have given and will continue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, we move on to discussion, talk for action, and consideration to assist funding of City of Mitchell Building Project.
So I put this on the agenda also, it's a fun year ago. Doing our urban renewal amendment, I attended city council meeting, Mitchell, Mitchell City Council meeting. And what we needed to do is because conservation wanted to upgrade Interstate Park, we needed to put that parcel of ground in our urban renewal area. And in order to do that, by Iowa code, you have to get permission from the city in order to, to do that. Went to the city council meeting and they said, yeah, no problem. They also asked about possibly the board helping them with a maintenance building that they've got that's falling down. And at first they didn't have an idea about it, went down the river road, turned around, came back and said, yeah, there's maybe something that we could do in order to help you. I didn't do anything with it for the last year simply because that urban removal was very big and I just simply didn't do anything about it for a year. The mayor, Mitchell, approached me at the assessor's conference board meeting afterwards and wondered about if there's any more thought on it. And I said I would put it on the agenda because I think we need to help some of our small towns. They don't have the tax base in order to do things like a larger town does. I think they need some help with this. So if we're going to do, and I don't know if this will work, this is part of Bond Council too, but if we're going to be doing our urban renewal amendment, is there a chance that we might be able to assist them as far as helping with their building and doing that? I talked to the mayor, he's got him and some other individuals from Mitchell here. So I guess I just would have some questions in regards to, do you have any idea what you're looking at for construction costs on, on that or?
Well, four years ago, we were talking about about 100,000, so probably save, but seems like the cost of building outpaces our ability to save. That's what I was probably.
Could you come up to the table because I, I think the people would like to be able to hear the conversation too. So originally, four years ago, it was $100,000, just estimated. Okay.
But then I said, the cost of building seems to outpace the cost of being able to save the money though too. Right now, I wouldn't think it's in our city code that we can even borrow money. So we're in contact with NICO to try to get our city code reworked and at least borrow money, get the thing done before the cost keeps going up, so. Okay, that was just the cost of building, but we still have to raise the old building. And there's no old concrete to build on, there's actually dirt flowing in that building. So when they're putting their tire chains on, stuff they're doing in the mud. Another problem we got is the septic tank for that city hall is inside that building. So we'd have to put a new septic tank into it. There's already a new bleach field there, we'll just have to get a new tank put in to, to be able to remove the old tank before we build it, so.
Okay. I had a question, I lost it. Someone was asking, oh, can you, can you give a description as far as what the building is to the board? So we know what we're talking about.
Right now, the existing building is just a three-sided wall attached to city hall. City hall is a brick and mortar structure. And it's just a pole building, but if we build it new, we should actually put in a foundation and make it that it lasts longer than what this one did. So I think it's about 40 foot deep, maybe 36 foot wide, I'm not sure. But we'd probably go a little bit wider, just make a little more room in there. So it's just a three-sided building attached to city hall.
I have a few pictures here and it looks like it's places where it's not attached anymore.
It's, it's, there's a problem up there.
And it looks like it's free for outdoor environments going in from the ground level.
We actually have squirrels that have gotten inside the attic of the city hall. It was stuck, swollen off the original structure that they attached to.
Do you use city hall?
We use city hall for city meetings, they use it for local elections, county elections. They rent, they, they rent it out for birthdays, baby showers, whatever.
Any plans on doing anything with that?
Inside city hall?
Yeah.
Just need the new drop ceiling installed right now, so to be, but the, the structure of the city hall is solid. There's nothing wrong with that.
It is.
It's solid. It's just that the building next to it, there's, there's nothing about it other than it sheds a little water.
That was up there a while back and if you tear that off, would you make it any different size?
We'd go a little bit wider towards the alley, towards the east, yes. It's crowded right now, we got three pieces of equipment in there. We got a maintainer, a dump truck, and then a tractor that we use to mow the ditches.
And is there a pile of sand or salt or something there?
We have, we store sand and do the sand city streets, yes. It's not big enough, you ever consider about buying the building to the east of you and putting it in that lot? Building to the east, that building's not for sale. We considered putting up a new building just west of the old county seat, the bar. The city has a piece of property, we thought maybe we just build a new building and then just tear that one down and use it for additional parking. That was one thing we thought about, but we're just, either way, the funds just ain't there to do it. We would like to just put up a new building and move all the equipment and just not even have, have stuff coming out on Main Street, all the pulling out the equipment and everything there on Main Street. But that's where we're at with it right now.
So you're looking at a loan to redo your city?
Yeah, if we get the city code reworked, that would come out. It's one consideration we're thinking about, but we have, we're still in contact with NICO to get that done, help us with that. There's other expenses that we have that, so we're, we're trying, we pay over $10,000 a year to mow a cemetery that we don't own. The cemetery was chartered years ago, about, I can understand, about 30 years ago and they just ran out of money and they abandoned it, so. By the goodness of their heart, we took it over. Just we got to take care of it, so. We, we've done some fundraising for that with our Sessquins Centennial Celebration back in 2004. And I got that new, that new archway built for the gate and everything, but that's where we're at with that, so. I gave Jim all our financial stuff for the last couple of years and I'm sure Rachel will go back and find anything that need for sort of city financing and stuff.
So the total funds that you're thinking of is?
I wasn't, I didn't have any numbers in mind. We, we just asked Jim, is there any way, is there any funds available for this? That's what we asked last summer, is there any funds available for the state and everything? And he come back and said he might be able to do something with TIP. So we don't really actually have a number in mind.
So this is similar to the Historical Society agenda item where, you know, if, if I'm going to be calling Bond Council and Northern Securities, I could, I could ask if this is even a possibility that we could assist in funding a, a building, a maintenance building for the City of Mitchell. You know, Bond Council says, no, there's no way to do it, well then, then we have that answer. But I wanted the city to come here so that we could at least, if the board wants me to ask the question, then I'll ask the question. I guess this is kind of that simple. I don't know what Bond Council was, is going to say as far as if we can do it or not.
Maybe I got it.
Well, you know, but, but.
Look at that.
I mean, it doesn't hurt just asking since you're writing a phone call.
Yeah. Does the board still think about it?
I, I think that we should think about it. I think that's an issue that came up for me quite a bit last year, not only Mitchell. Of course, I have a little allegiance to Mitchell, but also Carpenter, you know, has experienced some issues with, with some of the functions of running their city as well.
And what you're, what you're best to.
Yeah, if we, you know, can provide some, some assistance some way, you know, from funds. But there again, you know, we need to take a look at it, see how much and see how it fits into the financial picture. Because it doesn't do much good to, like you say, put it all out there and then have us scrambling at the end, trying to figure out how to make things work. So, yeah.
If you could start scratching your head in regards to what you think things are going to cost and what you actually want to do, if I can do that, it, this is a, it takes a process to, to make all this happen. But I'll initially ask them as far as if it's even a possibility, so.
Yeah, either way, we're going to need a number, so.
Just for the fun of it, I got ahold of a concrete guy, Moltz. And it's probably around 35,000 for concrete to go all the way along the city hall, all the way back to your brother's shed, that boundary. And then at a minute, I come and take a look at it. And he would probably, he's over 100, 120, 130, so he's probably looking at close to 200, up in 180, somewhere in there. By the time there's a septic tank and.
Did you give them the measurements to go a little farther east than the existing building?
He just went, yeah, that's going all the way out to the old footing from the old buildings.
There's an old foundation there.
There's a foot here that runs along the alley there.
If you ever need to drive through there to see. If you ever mentioned to drive through there to see what we got, that there's, to the east of the existing structure, monitor down, there's an old foot in there, rigid building that was there years ago.
Well, I have been up there and I was wondering if you could go any farther north. Is that a problem?
We got, we got LP tank all the way north and we store some stuff outside to the north too. But the, the size works. I mean, it's, it's tight, but we only got three pieces of equipment to store. So, yeah.
Are those all here?
All the ones in the city. No, there's two tanks there. Senantics Electrics got one tank and then we got one tank there.
I, I, let's pick two hundred thousand. Okay, we'll just have a number.
Yeah, I'd probably be a little shy.
Yeah, but we'll just use that as a number for discussion here. So personally, I, I hesitated just throwing two hundred thousand dollars at you guys. I mean, I don't know. I'm not going to support that. But when we start this process, there's going to be other small towns that are going to want to, to do this also, which I don't necessarily have a problem with because they need some help. But we're going to have to have some sort of basis of what we would do rather than just awarding this entity this much and this entity this. But so a precedence that I have just in my head right now is the historical society buildings about the number that they have posed to us is about a third of their construction cost. Possibly we do a third of, of your construction cost as far as what you've got. Just so that we here have some sort of consistency as far as what we're doing when we move forward. Now, that doesn't mean it's going to happen because that's, we're, we're just here to talk about stuff. And so that's just a thought on my part.
Oh, question. What about anyway, getting any funding to help with maintaining the cemeteries or anything up there?
Got the one where for the veterans, but.
I just feel.
Yeah, it's pretty small. There's also local option sales tax. That's an option. Have to go to the bond council. And you are correct. But, and then also though, if we're using that as our internal loan funding mechanism, well, then that's, to me, it's more beneficial to use it as a, as a funding source for ourselves rather than to be just giving it out. That doesn't mean we can't give it out, but if we give it out, it's gone. Whereas if we use it as a renewal amendment, we're getting paid back. But it's not gone, plus interest. So I like that route better. Again, I don't know what bond council's going to say about this, but we'll have to find that out.
Appreciate consideration.
Dave, did you have something else?
Well, I don't right now. We have an insurance inspection. I don't know who we got our insurance with for the building, but if they walked in there and looked at it, they'd walk away if they were. They'd say you're done. Because that pole was pulled away from the strip of Trump and it's sitting there just hanging barely in all of my head.
Well, the door's not locked. You guys want to open the door and lock in? It's not for me. It's hard to have.
I definitely would like to look into it. I think you should continue on getting some estimates and we'll continue to discuss and what we feel like the dollar amount would be to help out. That's coming from Todd and Brian. I'm not sure what everybody else considered.
First guy has questions. Thank you.
Thanks. Yep, you go.
All right. Number thirteen, discussion and possible action on quotes for backflow at county service building and a five-year sprinkler contract at the court. I know Dave just didn't come in here, but it looks like.
He was in here and then he stepped out.
Think we have four quotes? Everyone get four quotes?
Do we just interrupt with, with Dave being gone? Do we want to go down to fourteen? I mean, is that, would that be Rachel?
Can you come back?
And wait to see if Dave wants to come back?
Oh, okay.
I hear his voice.
Continue on.
Nevermind.
I thought I heard. He's here.
Yeah, I gotta go.
Good morning.
Morning.
You're up.
Did you get copies of all that?
Four quotes, right?
Yes.
Yeah, four quotes. Two from Johnson, one from Voight Fleming and.
The one is three hundred and sixty-two dollars and the other one is thirteen hundred and fifty-eight for the same thing?
Yes, that's exactly right.
The three hundred dollar one is going to get everything done that we need to get done?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
That was quite, quite different.
Quite different.
The good news is this gentleman's from town here. So, you know, I'd rather, rather have him. It's good to know because we've got four other backflow preventers that sooner or later, they're all going to leak. And it's nice to know there's somebody in town that's qualified and has the license to work on.
The other two are fairly close to each other. Any recommendation on you as far as why we want one or the other?
So the, the only, the only nice part about biking is they were the installers here. But it's been ten years ago. None of those guys were on board when we built this place. But they're closer. I would like to, I don't know. I'm going to be honest, Johnson Controls is just been kind of an issue. Expensive, long story. You don't, you don't need to hear it right now.
They've been difficult to contact and they've been difficult to reply.
Mm-hmm. And it's stuff we gotta do. I mean, it's just COVID. It's stuff that.
Right.
Have no choice.
Well, if you're comfortable with Voight, I'd make a motion to go with Voight for three hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-two cents.
I second that motion.
Mark made a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, Tom.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Cindy.
Aye.
Ian.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Motion passes.
The other two, I guess, would you say it's seventy dollars difference?
Um, I think seventy-five and. That's actually closer. Now it's like about twenty bucks.
Okay. I would like to get Viking in here because they, he looked around in there and looked at the other pumps and he said, this is all stuff we can work on too. So they're not just fire, uh, fire equipment. It's always good to have more contacts because this stuff is big enough where the guys in town, for the most part, can't deal with it. That's just my opinion on that. It would be nice to have somebody else because we'll have a five-year due in, at the jail at some point in the next five years. But this is at a point where we really should have two bids when it's over, over this dollar amount, right? I mean, it's wrong just to say here and do it.
It's best to do.
Right.
You like Viking for the fifteen seventy-five?
I believe so.
I'll approve Viking Fire Protection Group for the five-year internal pipe test at a rate of one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. And I'll just note, this is not part of the motion, but multi-year contracts will not have the increases until her full term has expired. So that's the rate for the duration of it. So that's not part of the motion. That's just information.
Jim made a motion. Can I second?
I'll second that.
Mark, second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Ian.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Cindy.
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks for all the information. Approved resolution to create sub-project funds.
And so after last week's budget meeting, we talked about creating the sub-project fund. So I was talking to Julia Howard County, which Elizabeth was over there helping with their audit. So in order to even create it, we need to have a resolution to create the fund basically. So we can create the fund and you just have to list in there what you plan to use it for. It is kind of generic, but kind of specific the way it currently is. And if there's anything you guys want to add to it, we can do that too.
What's the resolution number, Rachel?
Twelve sixty-five dash twenty-five.
So how can we, even though it's pretty generic, can we add and take projects away? If we, um, so if we decide to put a project in, okay, so let's itch me that. We'll try to just keep it under county buildings, property and IT?
That's what I put in now. Similar to what the other counties have kind of talked about. Otherwise, if something else comes up, you just have to create another fund specific to whatever that is, or come back and amend this.
Okay. Thank you. I think this is pretty decent because it basically says we can fix things and we have money to fix it.
Right.
I will move to make a motion to create a sub-project fund, resolution number twelve sixty-five dash twenty-five.
Todd made a motion. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Ian seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, Mark.
Aye.
Ian.
Aye.
Cindy.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Motion passes. Onto meetings amended.
I had nothing.
Nothing.
I attended the conservation board meeting last Tuesday night and he already reported on a whole lot of the events. It was too bad that their Valentine stroll got canceled, but it was cold. So that's understandable. They have the turkey event, deer and turkey event coming up in March. And the partial remodel in the building itself looks great and they're coming along. The lighting there was much appreciated. That, that really helped out that you can see a whole lot better in there. And then, as he mentioned, the truck list, listing should be completed by the end of this week. Yeah. And the deer and turkey show March fifteenth. And that's about all on there's. I also attended on Friday, the Mitchell County Board of Health meeting, which was a full agenda. From that meeting, the North Iowa Community Action Group was there, two individuals, and it was a real eye opener for me. You know, I've been familiar with the home health services from a manner of support for elderly in their homes or assistance that they're giving in, on the home health side. But the number of programs that are, are supported as far as they're that working with facilitating with home health and the North Iowa Community Action, everything from helping people with language services to, to the WIP program, to breastfeeding young children services and the additional services that are, are provided as far as bike safety training. They were talking about that kind of thing and how they can assist with that in programs coming up. One of the things that did come up was their support or backup on the sanitation job while, while our sanitation director is out. And so they did vote on a twenty-eight E agreement with Chickasaw County Public Health so that if something comes up, which it did here in the last couple of months, where they need some assistance, some additional review of what the process or next step should be, that they have that resolution in place, that they can reach out to them. And Chickasaw County is, had agreed to help and, and did help them through one of those situations. They visited some about the Valant signage of some of those papers and they tabled that at this, at this time right now. And they will review that further as they go forward. And yeah, they do a whole lot of immunizations. The only really big adjustment to their budget was of course, the fact that they were fortunate enough to get the, the dairy grant. And so otherwise their, their budget looks to be in, in good shape and they're looking forward to next year and lots of great programs come out of that department. I, it was a real eye opener for me.
I have to comment about the Valant thing. So I had a number of emails with them in regards to what that is going on with that.
Right.
And I talked to Jolene also. I'm going to get ahold of, I'm going to continue with those emails with Valant, not just the Osage plant, but the one at Libertyville. That's the main office in the country. And ask them when they actually need these documents signed because it's, it, it's crucial that we're not hampering Valant's operations.
Their, their production.
Yes. It's very crucial. And from what they proposed, what they sent to me and what I sent to the Board of Health is, to me, is totally satisfactory in regards to having our, our sanitation sign them. She's not certifying their product. She's just more or less verifying, verifying that that product is being made in Osage. The EPA, the document that they will be providing is the certifying document. So I was disappointed that they tabled it, but first thing is going to find out when this needs to be signed. If, if we're already past due, it's kind of a big deal.
Right. And they talked about that.
Okay.
And I don't mean to, to interject or interrupt you there if you want to continue. But one of the things that, that did come up was Dr. Ross had shared that over the last years, let's say since Valant's been there, they've had some people that have fallen into the, some structures with this material in it. And so they want to assure, just to be on the safe side, that they have what they need in place to, to make sure that as far as assuring the safety of the employees and that they have all the backup and documentation that they need for that situation because of, of the particular item that they're, they're producing and they want to make sure that. And those, those situations have come to the Mitchell County Regional Health System in the last several years. So that was maybe one of the reasons that they said, let's make sure we have all of our i's dotted and our t's crossed and then we can go forward. And she was gonna, Jolene was going to continue to communicate with you and, and work with you. And so I said, this has kind of been your area of research. And so I wasn't going to step into that other than.
That's good information. If, if, I'll either need to get that from Jolene or if you could provide me that because I don't want to send them an email. And it's like, oh, by the way, I forgot.
Right. I certainly can, yeah.
I'd like to have, I'd like to get it resolved and be able to have everything in one email and try to get it going.
They had a huge full agenda. They also had two individuals. They also had two individuals from Nextera that were there, you know, as far as the solar and wind and energy, asking if there were any questions. They had environmental protection wise and so, they were there. Their agenda was full. It was huge. And so, rather than make a hasty vote and decision, I think they wanted to, you know, just do one last check, let's say, before they put anything in. They do know that they also need to make sure when these forms need to be signed and where we're at. And I think there might have been some question on that as well.
Very good.
On their side.
I didn't know all of that, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah. So. And that's it.
All right.
That's it. And I, I met with Aaron and, and met with Conservation and had some conversations with the folks at the engineer's office. So, I'm trying to work my way through the bunch.
I just had a meeting last week with our budget meeting last Wednesday and.
I had a fair board meeting. The Audrey, the secretary there in Florida, unfortunately. So, but I believe there was some grants out there that are coming in for some of the external, basically the, of the new building. I don't know the specifics on that. Their contracts are coming in. They're working on the tractor pull yet, maybe changing the classes up a little bit. That's beyond me. We have a couple of good guys working on that. He talked about some rentals of the ground. There was individual on that. And I guess there, they were, this entity was here a few years ago and used the whole fairgrounds and the CRC building. Or they paid to use it. And they were here in town to see if they could come back and they, they are coming back in the fall of twenty twenty-seven. And they wondered what was going on around there with that new building. So, they're willing, they were excited about that. This, they take the whole fairgrounds and then some. And they were pretty excited about that new building hopefully be up and they're gonna have activities going on in, in there. And, and there, they said they'd definitely pay more for the use of that buildings.
Very good.
And there is a Sunday morning, I guess, the Easy Riders, Snowmobile Club are gonna have, serve breakfast on Sunday morning of the fair. I think they've been doing that.
They've been doing that for quite, yeah, number of years.
They, they wanted to be back on the agenda to say they would like to do that again. Let's see, then they have a district meeting coming up, March twenty-third in Arden County. And I guess the, they take a group down to that. That was it.
Public comments?
Yes. I was on the board for twenty-four years and I look at how this county has evolved since then and how it's kind of become the premier county in northeast Iowa, you know, north central Iowa. And it's because of the proactive boards that we've had. Mark, I worked with your dad. He was one of the best supervisors to work with. Mark, I hope you would support the same things he would and I know he would support this. I, I know he would. But anyway, I look at what Aaron said and I think of all the times that our board worked with the county attorney's office and all of the research, every time we had a question, they looked at AG's opinions and so on, came back with answers. So, I know how important that is. Mike, I look at the conservation and I look at what we had when I got on the board. It was one little building down on the Lime Creek Road and I think Hendrickson or whatever Henderson's Tree Service has. And now, we had no programs. I look at what's happened in conservation and I, I want to mention, I'm very happy that I was able to obtain the land from the folks for all of that because of board, you know, we thought, maybe we ought to ask them to give the company with that ninety-two acres, which we did and, and folks did. So, anyway, I just wanted to say that, you know, all these little towns have no tax base anymore. They, they have very little businesses, just the houses that are there. So, I, I'm in full support of looking at helping them out anyway. And if we had Turpin Services, you know, the Turpin money, and I don't care what anybody says. And Jim, I appreciate if the bond service, if there's a way that we can help with that. There's no use in that money sitting there and not helping in the things that this county needs to move forward and keep us as, you know, healthy as we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Keith.
Along the same lines as to where we're at budgeting for small towns, you know what the budgeting problems are. We cannot even grow unless we can show that our evaluation is growing. We've talked to our financial advisors and if there's ever a time to borrow money, now is the time. Because we cannot increase our evaluation without moving forward. So, Saint Anker's going to be borrowing money to put up a better maintenance shed as well. And if you guys are happy with paying a third of it, I'm up for that. Remember me. Thing is, there's only so much in the pot. Anyway, is there any way that you can straighten out your urban renewal a little better so that you can support these towns when you need to, instead of having to go make an amendment to amend your urban renewal to include it in something? Can't you, can't you urban renew a whole town? You know, you can, you can deny a request or something, but at least your, your urban renewal is set up.
It, it's not practical to put the whole town in a, in, in our, I mean, all those parcels in our urban renewal. I don't think you can do that. I don't think you could just put everything. You, you can't, if, if you're gonna do that, you might as well just put all of Mitchell County in an urban renewal area and you can't do that.
I know what you can do. Is it would simplify what you're trying to do, if you did not have to go through that.
I think when, when we did this in oh-nine, when we did all those roads, when the conservatives first came here, all the roads were put in an urban renewal area. And I was involved with that with AutoCAD at the engineer's office doing all of that. And at that time, I think it was also thought that, well, let's just put the whole county in an urban renewal area. And that was struck down by the process and no, you can't do that. So, it was just the roads that got put in.
That answers my question. But there's got to be some ways you can simplify the needs out there. Maybe you need to attach larger, larger blocks of money to help a town with something or to do roads or whatever. Designate those funds for that. And then you know what percentage of your budget is included in those things. It'd be a lot easier to, if you allow.
Okay, two points. One is that individuals come to the board supervisors a lot in regards to us needing to do something. And by all means, I am all for helping people to do things. I want to do a lot for the county. But we have this giant umbrella over us called the State of Iowa. In the state of Iowa, in the code, in Iowa Code fifteen A, the first paragraph says that the General Assembly has said to, found that it's important for economic development to happen in the state of Iowa. And counties, the state, counties and cities need to participate in, in order to benefit the state of Iowa. But they don't live up to their paragraph because they, they restrict what we can actually do. So, rather than everybody always thinking that the board supervisors can just wave a wand and make it happen, we can't because the state of Iowa is kind of hypocritical in some of their thought processes. And people need to get hold of the state of Iowa in order to change their mentality. That's that point.
Call it voting.
And that's called voting. The second point, I may have already forgotten because I got into the first point.
I understand what you're saying, Jim.
Yeah.
But Saint Anker and Osage and all the other little towns are part of Mitchell. So, we do not declare every place a renewal area in cities either. Likewise, you are a bigger picture, so you should be able to spot the little things of a city. I always want to hope so, but then you have to deal with politicians. That's not gonna work.
I, I've talked with Heidi at Northland and we, on that urban renewal. And she says it's just part of the process that you have to do that each and every time.
Right.
They don't want to make it easy. Basically, put like you're saying, Keith, put everything.
They don't want to make it easy.
Correct. And those are exact words that she said. And, and it's, it's not hard when you have people like that to help you. But it's just a process of what you have to do to basically use the TIF money and, and stuff like that, so.
Because of the regulations.
Do it all for you. You don't have to do a thing.
Right. But, but, you know, Todd brings up a good point. Because of the steps that you have to take for spending TIF money and the, the succession of events that have to go on in order to get a project completed, it has to be more individualized or project oriented. I know it, it seems rather a lot of foolish steps to, to go through at times, but that's how they set that system up. And, and keep in mind, I'm still learning a ton about it. But that much I did, I did attain that, you know.
It's not that difficult. They'll lay it right out for you what you have to do.
Right.
They'll program on all else, they'll do it for you.
But as far as cutting a wide swath, it would be great in my mind if we could say urban renewal, you know, is, is Carpenter and Saint Anker and Osage and Stacyville and, you know, all of, all of the communities so that we don't have to keep coming back to the table and do all this. I would agree. That would be, that would be great. And if we could find out if we can widen that scope, maybe that's a question we have to ask again.
They'll never answer that.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you for, for addressing all of these issues. They're all parts of Mitchell County's growth. Thank you very much for doing that.
And, and they don't do it all. I mean, this girl right here has to get information for her and, and so, it isn't just Northland security.
I know that. And we're, and it's not that difficult.
I do remember my second point because it's important. So, we, we can do that, we can use that money in two ways. We can do it with an internal loan or we can do outside funding. And we did outside funding with last year's and we have to pay interest to do that. We, we got a loan, we need to pay interest. Internal funding, we get the interest coming into us. So, it, it, it does not make any sense for a city to say, it does not make any sense for us to be paying the interest when a city says, well, we have to go get a loan in order to do this. Well, you're just transferring.
Right.
An, an interest, outside funding loan interest to us rather than the city doing it. So, so I'm not supportive of that as far as, I'm willing to help, but I'm not willing to take on the total burden of, well, we're just gonna get this giant loan and have a loan with a, a bank or with a securities firm just so the city doesn't have to pay interest.
That's not what I asked you to do.
No, but I, that's a point that I wanted to make that, you know, I don't want to accept the interest just because the city doesn't want it.
You have to be managing funds of some, if you're wanting to do a managing fund, then we need to do our share too. I'm not asking for a free ride. Thank you very much for considering these things.
You have.
You know, one quick statement I want to say. Home, the best government there is, is the local government. Cities, counties, that's the best. And state has taken a lot of that away from it.
Right.
When I got on the board, we had home rule. And everything that wasn't spoken to in the code, we had home rule, we could do. Now, they've taken bit by bit away and there's very little home rule anymore. So, I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other public comments? Going to adjourn at ten thirty-five.